Good evening. The special meeting of May 22, 2023, of the Dubuque Community School District Board of Education is called to order. Our mission is to develop world-class learners and citizens of character in a safe and inclusive learning community. Roll call, please.
Bradley. Jones.
Here.
Parks.
Here.
Prohoska.
Here.
Ryan.
Here.
Sancy. Whitman.
Here. I move the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move the Board of Education approve the updated language of the general obligation bond petition.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the updated language of the general obligation bond petition. Is there any discussion?
After we had went and approved the original language, our attorneys just reached out one last time and just wanted to clarify if we would be acquiring land through the process, which we said that is a possibility. So they thought that we should add these words acquire land for to the petition or just to make sure that it's correct then on the vote as well. So once we go through and approve this, then we will go out and start going to petition as early as tomorrow. So we just wanted to make sure that we have it all correct and we're ready to go once the time comes.
Good.
Great.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. All right, so that brings us to the district strategic plan review, and I'm going to hand it over to Superintendent Hawkins.
Well, good evening. It feels like a year ago I was sitting here really, really nervous to talk to you all about the first year of priority initiatives in this position. So Stan started off the meeting and I was hardly paying even any attention to what he was saying.
Either or, wait, no, just kidding.
So I'm excited to be here tonight to really close the first year of my position as superintendent and with all of you as board members. So the one thing as we were reflecting on, the priority initiatives, is it feels like we've done a really good job this year of talking about them frequently. You know, I think having it as an item on our ed programs agenda, there's been lots of... Am I echoing? I'm sorry. Okay. So we've had lots of discussion and I feel like we've brought lots of different members of the community and our school district with staff to the table to show you how these initiatives are affecting us in our day-to-day workloads that we do every day. So tonight, I'm probably not going to sit here and summarize every single priority initiative because you know about most of them and I feel really good about that and I hope you feel that way as well. But we are going to go through some that have maybe changed in the last month or two and just to do some finalized updates as we go through it. But I feel like the team, which is all sitting back here, I have to thank them because without them, none of these would be completed. So this is all the work that you guys do all year long and thank you for that. So if we start with student achievement, the one that I just want to talk, just to remind everybody about, is number two, about exploring the district community partnership and looking at early childhood programming and the belief grant. And just as a reminder, we have done a partnership with Dubuque Initiatives and looked at that preschool facility out in Chavanel Road. So I look forward to the next school year, planning for that and getting that ready to be opened in the fall of 2024. And so it's been exciting. We've gotten great feedback from the community about that new facility, not only for there to be preschool there, but for there to be wraparound care there because we know that that's a big piece of our community that we're missing when we have our own preschools in our schools. So I'm really excited about that. The next one, number three, to talk about provide professional development for staff that increases the sense of belonging in the classroom and providing students with an optimal learning environment. One thing I'd like to just invite Mark Burns up to the microphone and he's going to talk a little bit about the strides that we've made this year with our guiding coalitions, which has been a new thing that we started this year.
So we've created guiding coalitions at the middle and high school. We've worked all year on the high school guiding coalition and we just started the middle school one. The guiding coalition is the instructional coaches from both of the high schools or all three middle schools and all of EST and myself. And what we're really working on is looking at the research, answering questions that we might have, learning about practice, best practice, and then going out there and doing the work. So it's essentially a building leadership team, but it's a combination of both the high schools and the district office. Any questions about?
Perfect. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Anderson. The next priority initiative is around expanding the Vertex Initiative. And so as you know, David Moller and Mark came and spoke to us about the different pathways that have been developed for our high schoolers. And it seems like every day we're talking about some different pathways that people would like to see for us to create. And so I think that the high schools, the counselors, and our Vertex coaches are really looking forward to the upcoming school to add more pathways for students to match their interests. Number five is supporting furthering each school's MTSS, or multi-tiered system of support, work as outlined in their school plans. And so one of the things we've talked a lot about this year is social-emotional learning. And Mimi and her team have done some great work around Second Step at our elementary schools and getting that in place in all of our elementary schools. And then Seven Mindset, which we're using currently in all three of our middle schools. But one of the things I really wanted to bring highlight to is Shirley's going to come up and talk to us a little bit about the brain health retreat rooms and the addition of one at the ALC campus.
As you know, we've had two brain health rooms since second semester of last school year, one at Hempstead, one at Senior. So on April 12, we opened a third brain health room at the Alta Vista campus. And so far, since a year ago at semester when we opened them, we've had around 8,000 visits to our brain health retreat rooms, not unique students but visits, and they are working even better than we imagined. Students are coming for those brief interventions and we find that students with high anxiety are able to stay for the full day with that brief intervention, get them back to class. So they have served our purpose really well and we're excited that we could add a third one to our mix.
That's awesome. Great. In fact, when we talked about priority initiatives for the upcoming school year, one of the conversations was how do we get brain health rooms in all of our schools? So it's definitely been a huge asset for our students at the secondary level.
I had a question about that. So who's been staffing those? I should maybe know this, but...
So for our staff members, we do want master's prepared individuals. So we're looking for employees who have a school counseling degree or a background in mental health therapy. And so that's who's staffing. Do you want the names of the people?
No, no, I was just kind of curious, you know, requirements? Are they full-time employees, not paras, right?
Yes, they are full-time employees with that background and then they're in the brain health room all day long. We do close them for that 20 minutes when they have lunch or sometimes if it's a particularly busy season, like right now is a really busy time. Last week, they saw a lot of seniors who were anxious about the last day of school or am I going to graduate? So that was a pretty stressful time. And now, of course, preparing students for summer vacation. Summer is a joyous time for many of us, but not all students. And it's really interesting as we're collecting data month in, month out. Once we get enough data, we're going to be looking at trends, something we saw throughout this year that we didn't anticipate, our sports teams before the big games when you have athletes who are doing really well and teams that are doing really well, the anxiety of the team members really elevates and they are actually starting to visit our brain health rooms to get relaxation techniques, strategies to cope for the big game or just to come in and breathe for a while and relax. So we're seeing a variety of uses, some anticipated, some not.
Sure, I got a question too. How long typically is a student, I guess, being in the brain room? And then also the second question is, are staff utilizing that space too for the same?
We check in students or they check in themselves when they come in. And then a lot of our brain health room liaisons set a timer, like an egg timer. We really want to limit them to 15 to 20 minutes. It's meant to be a brief intervention, get back to class and not hide out there. And it's working. We are doing that. And the second thing is, yes, we do see staff members there. They tend to come down if they've had a particularly tense day. And I don't know if you've been in them, but we have those beautiful chairs with those big sides. They come and they sit in those and just take some deep breaths. If you haven't been to the brain health rooms, I'd really invite you to come and tour them or maybe we could do that the start of next school year. They are a relaxing place. When I'm in the buildings, I always find my way to one of those rooms and just walking in, it's a very relaxing, calm place. You know, there's all kinds of fidgets, materials meant to have students come in and relax and feel safe. And with that, I should add, we're moving our senior high brain health room. It's in a construction zone, so they're in the process of packing it up. And a new room is selected and it will be on first floor with beautiful windows and more space.
Thank you.
Thank you. And all the fun things on the wall too, right? Yeah.
Yes, and the fun door saying brain health retreat room on the outside.
Moving on to number six, we've talked a little bit about graduation requirements and then Mark and his team came in and presented to you... Was that last month? I think it was last month. And so exciting times, looking at how we can do different things with electives and give students more choice. And then looking at moving our graduation requirements from 46 to 44, obviously with students having the option to still take up to 56 credits. But and so the work of his group next year will really be around how we can tie those pathways into those graduation requirements and really get some outreach to what electives we would recommend for what their interests are. So, Mark, I appreciate the work your team has done with that this year. Looking forward to seeing where that goes. Number seven and number eight, that's always a good thing when we can see a check mark up on the board. That means we checked it off. And so Julie has done, Julie and her team have done a really good job with the computer science programming. Do you want to come up and talk about that, Julie?
Good evening, everyone. So yeah, we were able to do a check mark. We now, for fall of 2023, have computer science in every single grade level, pre-K through 12 offerings. So we were really able to enhance the offerings this year in elementary. So every single grade level in the elementary is now onboard. It's been a good year.
Exciting, yes. Middle schools have all the Lego League.
Middle schools have, yep. And we were also able to get all three middle schools onboard this year with coaches with the FTC teams. So they were all able to go to four competitions. So we're rolling. We're on our way. The high school team will be moving because of construction. They will be relocated for next year, but they will still stay a dual Hempstead-Senior. I guess a trio. Dubuque Online School students also could be part of that, but that will be at Hempstead for next year because of construction at Senior. But we also have a very robust high school robotics team.
I do have a question about STEM.
Sure.
So now that we have access, seems like in all of the levels, how are we getting students to actually participate? Is there a strategy that you and others are working on?
So we'll do a lot of recruiting in the middle, six through 12. In elementary, it happens during the day right now. So all students are being exposed, all students will have opportunity. And not just opportunity, but it will be part of their curriculum in the elementary world, which we then hope transitions into a want and we're feeling them out and then recruiting them for six through 12. There are still opportunities within exploratory courses. We do have robotics going on in exploratory courses in seventh and eighth grade. And then we also have introduced robotics, some of the physical computing in some of the computer science classes and courses at high school level.
Thanks, Julie.
You're welcome.
So now we'll move on to community engagement. And so the first one is really about the parent organizational network that Mike and his team have been doing some great work on. And I think if they would meet, if he said they could meet two times a week, they would come. So, Mike, do you want to talk a little bit about the PTO network?
Sure. Well, I think that when you saw and heard from one of the parents involved in that, that that really speaks volumes to that work. One of the things that we're looking forward to as we look at next year is really trying to broaden the participation across our buildings and to look at how can we provide some additional learning and collaboration for the members of that group. So we're looking at almost creating a symposium-style event that we can plan. We're working on what that looks like, but whether that's a half-day or a multiple-hour thing where we can have breakout sessions so that the group treasurers who wish to learn more about finance can do some specific sessions on that. And the folks that want to learn about recruitment of staff members can learn about that and to really develop an opportunity to then do those breakouts, but then also to bring the groups together to do some collective learning and look at trying to make one slightly larger commitment for that as we begin the school year, in the early part of the school year, to set them up for success moving forward. So we're really excited about that as hopefully an additional offering next year.
Thanks, Mike. Did you want to follow up a little bit too about the school business partners and our plan for that for next year?
Sure. So school business partners, this is one of the initiatives that you know sometimes we see carryover. And this was a two-part initiative and you've heard a lot about the mentoring component this year. And when we talk about school business partnerships, where we saw much of that effort continue this year is really in the career and college readiness sphere and the work with the Vertex Initiative. So what we'll be looking at as we move into next year is a specific priority initiative that's going to look more specifically at the school business partnerships in what I'll call the more traditional way of those partnerships, when we look at various support opportunities within buildings, some additional mentoring across levels, but maybe looking more at the elementary and middle school level and really looking at how do we also take those businesses and partners who are involved in the career and college readiness piece and see how we can look at other opportunities for them to be involved. And then to look at that as a two-way street, to say partnership means two ways. And so what ways can our schools then be involved? And we know what that looks like very well at the career and college readiness level. And how do we move back to some of the things that we would have done pre-COVID that dissipated in large part because everyone was away? But to look at how do we have student artwork in buildings, opportunities for music ensembles to perform with businesses as they see fit? And how do we really look at those two-way opportunities? So you'll see that incorporated into the priority initiatives for the upcoming school year.
Great. Number 11, reconnect and re-engage families to their school communities. I think this has been a huge check mark, but we have to continue to do that. As we know, each day, we're always trying to connect differently with families. And our schools have really done a good job of getting families back in for orientation nights. We're doing lots of carnivals this time of year. You know, we're doing food truck movie nights, all sorts of things. But Lisa, if you want to come up and talk about the kindergarten welcoming night and then the new exciting news about before and after school care.
Hello, everyone. First of all, the kindergarten welcome event was a huge success this year in terms of, we have projected numbers from preschool and we send out messages to those families. We had over 60% of those families attend, which that was a great start to their enrollment in our kindergarten programs throughout the district. One of the things we did, we had Card Your Yard. So families were able to come in and take a picture of their child with the year that they'll graduate, which I've already forgotten. It's like 2035, maybe, somewhere in there, anyway.
I can't do math at this.
And they were able to go into the schools, get information about kindergarten. We've been pretty systematic across all 12 buildings about what information will go out so that families are getting consistent messages and so forth. And so right now, we're continuing to work to enroll more and more kindergartners. And so it was a great success. And what has also been really helpful is we have worked as a district team to identify who was unable to attend, why was that, what can we get to them? So a lot of follow-up has occurred to capture as many students as we can. So that was kindergarten. And then the other thing, as I shared with you before, we sent out an RFP to secure before and after-school programming at all 12 elementary sites for next school year. And really excited to announce that the Y, Dubuque Community Y, will continue to offer services at Table Mound, Eisenhower, and Carver. And then the other nine schools, so that'd be Audubon, Bryant, Hoover, Irving, Kennedy, Lincoln, Marshall, Prescott, and Sageville, will all have a company or a program called Champions. And that's through Kindred Care Learning Companies. And they offer some great programming for before and after-school care. They will also take drop-ins, they'll work with us on our break schedule. They will also accept childcare assistance. So that is huge for meeting the needs of all of our families in the district. The other piece about that is, this is like, I equate it to the buffet of childcare. So we have St. Mark's that will still work in tandem with some of our buildings, Leisure Services, of course, the Dream Center also serves many of our students. And so this fills the gap for many families that did not have these services available to them. And it will be right onsite at each school.
Is there a fee for that?
There is a fee, so what is... But the other piece of that is we have childcare assistance. So they have people that will help fill out that paperwork. So families will be able to access the program for free via income guidelines. And we still have our other programs like Leisure Services and St. Mark's. So there's the whole gamut to meet the needs of all families.
How will the new Medline facility, how will that affect the preschool enrollment in our downtown or any of our other schools that?
That's a great question. So we're very conscious of the fact that we need to really work to make sure that we are able to reach as many families as possible. So the big thing is, is there will still be a preschool program in every single building. And if families want to access that wraparound care feature, they can enroll out at Medline. And we're working with Opportunity Dubuque and Dubuque Initiatives to think about are there transportation pieces that we can put in place? The other piece of that is we're also looking at other opportunities for our other schools within our title schools, how we perhaps extend their day or we don't have anything solidified as of yet. But we're exploring those and trying to also address that piece because of the fact that we wouldn't have wraparound care in some of, well, in all of our school buildings.
Yeah, this year we've had kind of a, I would use the word hodgepodge of how we've offered before and after-school care and not all of our buildings have had both. And so for us to be able to say that all 12 buildings will have that opportunity is a great accomplishment and still be able to give the supports from other community partners as well. Because as we know, there's limits to those. So if they can, you know, if St. Mark's, let's say they can say we'll take 20 students, then we still have an opportunity for other students to receive before and after-school care as well.
Right. St. Mark's is moving their program offsite. They're going to transport to the Boys and Girls Club and do an extended evening where they can have a dinner and so forth. So that's one option, but they can only take so many. And we know, we have families, we're trying to fill those gaps and make sure that we're making things accessible for all.
So after this meeting tonight, there will be an email going out to all our families, letting them know that Champions and the Y will be serving all the schools and with more information on how to enroll coming in the next few days. So good work, Lisa.
Thank you.
If we look at effective resource management, number 13 is really something that we've been talking about quite frequently with the three to two middle schools and talking about the bond referendum. So I don't think we need to go into too much detail about that. However, we have been working hard to look for, to gather our yes committee. And so we're having great success finding people that really want to be involved, support the schools, and help be transparent and be out in the community. So it's an exciting time for the district, for sure. Number 14 was explore feasibility of a learning management system and looking at maybe going one-to-one for the PK5 level. So Colby, did you want to some talk about that?
Absolutely. Good evening, everyone. You know, as we do with all of our priority initiatives, when we take something on, we want to do it right. And it was one of those, this priority initiative became very evident as we talked with a lot of vested interests within the district that maybe we need to take a pause because we don't know if we're going to be well-prepared to do, to make that implementation for the 23-24 school year. So we looked at some of the financial, academic, and logistical resources and we felt that, and a variety of us felt that it was probably better to table this and revisit this, continue this work forward, continue investigating this work and trying how we can best proposition the district to maybe introduce this. But it would not be something for the upcoming school year that we feel that we would be comfortable putting in front of our students and our staff. So therefore, we would like to revisit this coming up in the 24-25 school year to see if that's something viable that we'd like to continue or not.
Perfect. Thank you. And the next priority is about cybersecurity efforts. So if anybody knows Colby, he knows that that's really, it's a check mark, but it's also, as we know, technology changes on a daily basis. And so he's constantly having meetings and conversations and I believe we're getting a visit tomorrow from the...
The U.S. Department of Homeland Security.
Yes.
Tomorrow to talk about some of our cybersecurity posture.
So exciting time for Colby and his team, for sure. And then the last one is around employee excellence. And so if we look at priority initiative number 17, develop a staff retention plan that explores initiatives, systems of care, and enhance staff recognition programs. So Brian's actually going to share an exciting news about changing some summer work hours, which we found staff to be very excited about here for the summer.
So we looked into changing up the summer work hours and gave some options depending on the department that you were in, but for the 12-month employees. And one of them was the four nine-hour days with a four-hour day on Friday. And then we had the four 10-hour day model. And then we had the, you could stay with your five eight-hour days. And we've had some, the timeline to turn those hours in has not been passed yet, so we don't know exactly who is going to be doing what yet. But it's been pretty positive feedback so far where employees are pretty excited about the opportunity to maybe get out of work at noon, put those work hours in earlier in the week so they can enjoy a little bit more on their Friday afternoon. So we're excited to see that, for sure. And we're also working on staff wellness initiatives. Joe and I are looking into what it looks like to open up some of our facilities for staff members to exercise, to swim, to do some of those things that it's also another cost out there. And with the increase in everything, it's to have an opportunity to use a gym for no fee is a huge plus. So that's one of the things we're also really excited to share.
Yeah, great work. And then the last two priority initiatives, they are just continuous. You know, as we know, staff recruitment has become a huge piece of the HR office. You know, in the past, we would maybe do a lot of hiring in the summer. People would sign a contract and they would stay all year long. And so really, that's becoming a 12-month position. And so we've added somebody into that HR office to help with some of that employee recruitment and retention and to be out in the community trying to help us fill some of those vacant positions that we've had. So thanks for your efforts with that. So with that, that pretty much summarizes a lot of the work that we've done this year. Again, I feel like, you know, we've been staying up to date with the things that we've been working on and I hope that that format of going, you know, bringing those things to head programs has been helpful and beneficial to all of you. So are there any questions about that piece of it? Awesome.
Amy, this is Nancy. I just want to say I'm very pleased that you're carrying forward those initiatives that have not reached complete or operational. I think that's great and to be expected. We wouldn't expect a whole lot of things to get done in one year. And so... And so I appreciate that, appreciate that they're going to be continuing as a priority initiative for next year. So thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. So the next sheet that Mike had just handed out to everybody was the outcomes. And so as we know, we've talked about this a few months ago, was this year, our strategic plan was to sunset at the end of the school year. And so looking at those outcomes, we had talked about with it being my first year. And, you know, just a lot of things going on, on the plate that we would look at rewriting our strategic plan starting the next school year for the next five years. And so with that, we thought it only made sense for us to look at updating our outcomes if we're going to extend it for one year. The area where we came into kind of a snag was that when this, when these outcomes were written, a lot of things were different pre-COVID. We did, we did different assessments, you know? We did fast testing. And now, you know, we do the universal screener. ISAS was, it's not the same as it was prior to COVID. And we haven't had data to share with you over the five-year period just because we didn't even take the test. I don't know, what year didn't we take the test? Was that 2020? Yeah, 2020, we didn't even take the test. So what we've done is we've really, for next year, is we've looked at our baseline data where we were this year. And we've really said, what is realistic for us for the next year to look at making some, some good progress in? So you can look at those, those percentages. And we really just took the percentage that we met this year and we increased it by about 2% or 3%. And those were looking at cohorts and scores from the grade levels below them as well. The one comment that I just want to make about the updated outcomes is around the college and career readiness. And so one of the things that we made as a priority initiative was around the ACT. And we were going to have an ACT testing day. And as we've learned, that the ACT isn't really a measuring stick for colleges, for people to get into college anymore. A lot of schools are not even, they're not requiring you to have it. And it's not part of the process when we're looking at scholarships and things like that. So as we, as a district, are really exploring, you know, do we want to take the, the money that we spend on having the ACT testing day and do something different, you know, with, with, with those funds to help our students be college and career ready? And so that's something that we're going to be exploring over the next year as well. Just so you know, I just want to be transparent about that. Because again, Julie, about what does it cost for us to have that ACT testing day? Or Colby?
So it costs about $17,000 for students to take the ACT. And that's not all of our juniors opting in to take one of those post-secondary exams. That is, we just pay for the ACT. So it's about $17,000 for the number of students currently taking it.
Right. And so our goal was to get 100% of our students to take that. And this year, you'll see that we got 56% of our students to sign up for those, for one of those tests, not just the ACT. So we've talked about, is it maybe a testing day where we do a variety of tests? You know, what does that look like moving forward? So just so you know, as we go to develop the strategic plan for the next five years, we might have to look at something different as a placeholder for that piece.
Because a lot of the colleges are dropping the ACT requirement. Have you seen that a lot of kids not coming? Is that 56%? Does the 50, 56% show up for any of the tests?
Right, correct.
So then about half do not show up.
That's correct.
Or our juniors.
Right, that is correct.
And that's prior to them realizing that, that ACT is not a requirement anymore?
I think people are, are realizing that it isn't.
Oh, right, realizing, okay.
Where they're going to school is not required.
Yep. I know Iowa State and you and I are not requiring it. And I believe our local, I don't know, are not, are not requiring it anymore either. So, so anyways, I just wanted to, to make note of that as we're looking at our outcomes moving forward. So if you're okay with that, then these will be our outcomes for the next school year. And then obviously, next fall, we'll be starting that work on developing a new strategic plan moving forward. So then lastly, we're going to go to the new initiatives for the 23, 24 school year. And I think as you see, when you look at these priority initiatives, you're really going to see four themes. And the themes have really come about by the staff, the community, the administrative team, the district leadership team, D-SIL. We've met with a lot of different groups, we've met with student groups to say, what are things that you're seeing that we need to have as our priority initiatives? And the things that are coming out, the, the language that we're hearing from multiple groups is we need to look at absenteeism. We need to look at a sense of belonging. How do we make students feel welcome and want to be, you know, in, in our, in our classrooms? Behavior support, what does that look like? And how do we support our students and our families and our staff around behavior? And then really, you know, what, what kind of information or gatherings can we give to our community, our families, and our students that can give them information about how they can be more successful as a student here in Dubuque Community Schools? So I think you're going to see that theme through the priority initiatives as we go.
Can I say that, can you verbalize though, that we're also looking at high student achievement? I mean, we, we need to, I, I see it in the outcomes. And, and, but we need to start really talking about and saying that we need to work to get our kids' scores up. And I know all of that is, supports that, but we need to verbalize that when we talk about this in a setting like this. That word needs to come out when we say that's one of our priority initiatives. Not just assume that that's the outcome. Do you know what I mean?
I know what you're saying, yeah. That's our ultimate goal.
I know that we need to verbalize that though. We need to verbalize those exact words so the community knows that we are focusing on that and not just the other stuff. Because I think that's kind of getting lost in some of the messaging and some of the notes that I've been getting from some, from some concerned community members.
Okay.
I know we know it, I know we're doing it.
Yeah.
I'm not saying we're not doing it, but we need to verbalize it. So the community knows that that's what we're talking about as well. I know it says it with that, but to verbalize it, we need to do that.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, student achievement is why we're all here, right? I mean, that's our number one goal. And how do we have students make progress each and every year in each and every content area? And that's our, that is our number one goal. And I think sometimes you're, it can get lost because if we don't work on some of these things that we're talking about, it's really hard for us to achieve that. And so I agree that we can be more verbal about that student achievement is always our number one goal.
Thank you.
So when we look at our priority initiatives under student achievement and development, one of the things that we're really going to focus on is that engagement and attendance piece. And, and more so, how do we lessen our high rates of chronic absenteeism? And so I think we can see throughout the country, we're seeing that absenteeism is growing. And so how do we get back to understanding the importance of coming to school each and every day? And the importance of being sit in the classroom each and every day? Because without doing those things, it's really hard for us to get to student achievement. And so how do, so parents understand the importance of bringing their students or dropping them off or encouraging them to drive, whatever that looks like. But I know we're going to do some good work around attendance. Number two is to strengthen our, our multi-tiered system of support, our MTSS, so that we can really look at that universal tier, that tier one, to make sure that each and every student is included when we're talking about academics and behavior and social-emotional learning, all those things. And how do we work to meet each and every student's needs? And what do those intervention, interventions look like? And how do schools know what all those interventions entail? And how they can meet the needs of each and every student? Number three is to expand our career pathways. We talked about that, Nancy, that's one of those that we're, you know, carrying over. Because we know the importance of that VERTEX initiative. We also know that we don't, not every student is going to leave us and go on to college, right? So it's about college and career readiness. And how can we expand those options for students so that they can, while they're in school, get those experiences to see maybe what they want to do after high school? And, and get credits? You know, I mean, ideally, we'd love for every student to be able to achieve an AA degree, you know, at net no cost to them. So they maybe don't have to have the expenses of going to a four, a four-year university, so. Number four is to plan and develop a ninth-grade seminar course. Mimi has written a grant that we actually received. We found out about a week ago that we received that. So that we will be able to hire staff members that will focus on this priority initiative and really look at focusing on both of our high schools, a cohort of ninth graders, to help with that transition from eighth to ninth grade. Because as we did the, the graduation requirement work, we really found that if students weren't successful that first semester of ninth grade, it was really hard for them to catch up and to graduate. And we all know that graduation, that's, that's what we're getting, that's what we're going to get each and every student to achieve. And so this group will do some jump starts, they'll do some, they'll, some interventions, they'll do some one-on-one work with some of our most at-risk students that are transitioning from the eighth to ninth grade and hopefully get them off to a really strong start so they understand the importance of, you know, attendance and doing your homework and all those things that we can push on, push aside as we, as we move into a new school.
So this would be for all ninth graders, correct?
Correct. So we, it'll be, they're working on like a class, like an elective class. So everybody wouldn't have to take it to, you know, initially. It wouldn't be a requirement, only because we won't have the staff capacity for that. But it would be something that we would encourage some of our most at-risk students to take that as an elective to help them with the transition.
So the grant is probably the initial introduction to this course? And the grant is to help?
The grant really helps pay for the staff to do that work and then to help us develop the course.
So the grant will take us through one year or longer? It depends on how many staff we-
Mimi, do you want to?
Yeah, yeah. Thanks. It's a stronger connections grant through the Department of Ed, and it's a three-year grant. So we wrote for stipended positions to be success coaches that would have a, a small caseload of ninth graders. So really targeting our ninth graders who are showing up attendance, behavioral, academic concerns. So our most at-risk ninth, ninth graders. The great thing though is those success coaches will be entrenched then with the ninth graders. There's also some money in the grant to help plan and produce some events that are targeted towards ninth graders. And then they would also be people that would be in a great position to help write this ninth-grade course.
There will be additional staff then?
They're stipended positions, so five to six success coaches at each high school.
Is it renewable, this grant?
We, we have it, we have it for three years. So it was $325,000 for three years. No, I mean, I-
I mean, is it brand, is it a brand-new grant or is it something that's been out there?
It was federal money, so I think it was new. It was new grant, and then it's, yeah, it's for the three years. So we budgeted out over the three years.
Yeah.
Hopefully it'll be a great success and they'll continue or build upon something?
Hopefully, it will be a great success and it will continue. One positive thing though, it would have the, the course would then be written. So there'd be some legacy from that. It also, kind of like a lot of this ESTR money, gave us a chance to experiment with some things that we weren't able to, if we didn't have the grant, we wouldn't be able to see if these success coaches are successful or not. Or if they, really hoping that these coaches can get out early, maybe do some home visits, things like that to connect to some of our families that are more challenging to connect with, with the ninth graders.
Mimi, this is Nancy.
Yeah.
When you say that these are stipended positions, do you mean that the grant is providing stipends for positions that already exist? And folks will take on additional coaching responsibilities? Or are these totally new positions?
Exactly, the first thing you said, Nancy. So it'd be an additional stipend to do, kind of like the TLG grant, that there'll be additional work during the contract year. And then there's six days per diem outside of contract budgeted into that. So they'd have those days to kind of prepare for the students, do some home visits, and begin some of the meetings for planning the events and writing the course.
That's great. That makes it potentially a more sustainable kind of role.
And this was really the wish of the high school leaders, felt like this format would be the most successful rather than having one person doing a large chunk of work. They preferred having multiple people dug in doing smaller parts of the work.
So has this been-
Good plan, thank you.
Excuse me, go ahead, Nancy.
No, I was just saying, I think that's a good plan. I appreciate that.
Has this plan been implemented in other high schools?
That's a good question.
And so how successful?
On the, and I don't, I don't know that answer. The grant, one of the suggestions was for success coaches for ninth-grade transition. I don't know about the other high schools.
I'm sure it'll be successful. I mean, just having that extra support. We learned that with the extra support we received after COVID funds.
Right.
The problem about it is, is it goes away. I mean, we know what's good, we know what worked to, during COVID money that came in, those ESTR funds that came in. It brought kids' scores back up, it got them, you know, a lot of kids back on track. And now it goes away. And so now we're going to, I get it, I'm not saying don't do it, I'm glad we're doing it. But that's what's so frustrating anymore is we get these grants, we know it's successful, and then we have to take it away because we cannot continue to afford to do that on our own budget that we have unless we choose to cut something else. It's all about priorities that we have to do. Yeah, unfortunately. And I, I do think that the system that they've put in place does make it a little bit more, I mean, it would make it easier for us to sustain it just because we can use teacher leadership, you know, moving forward. And we will have those funds available to us. So it's exciting, and the high schools are very excited about this initiative for sure.
And hopefully, then there'll be more grant funding available.
Well, yeah.
You know, so as things go away, maybe we can look for other funding.
The only way to do it anymore. We've got good grant writers here, right?
We do have good grant writers.
Joe got the lead grant too, so that was a good thing as well. So yeah. Number five is carryover from, from last year. Really looking at, looking at research-based to find effectiveness through creating and reinforcing an optimal learning environment. And really, how do we create that sense of belonging in the classroom? And we started doing that work this year, but that's just something we need to continue, again, to help our students to get to school and get to class and know the importance of, of that school is to them for their success. Number six, Joe, I don't know if you and Colby want to come up to the mic about this one. But again, we're carrying it over because we know that when students are connected to school, they tend to, you know, obviously have better grades, are more successful. Like their, their attendance is much, is much higher. But one of the things we've really explored this year is looking at the possibility of adding esports. We've heard a lot of feedback from our students that they're saying, hey, we're interested in esports. How do we get that? There's college scholarships out there around esports. I mean, Carrie can say her son's on one right now. So Joe and Colby, if you want to talk a little bit about that initiative?
Yeah, I, I think it really just comes down to, like we know with anything else, you know, from activities and extracurricular activities and those types of opportunities for kids. The more that they're engaged in school, the more that we're going to, we're going to see better attendance, we're going to see increased achievement, those types of things. So it's always about trying to figure out how we can find those little niches of kids that might not be engaged in some capacity or might not be doing something outside of school. We've talked about this at Activities Council. It's not always just about what are they doing at school? But are they involved at something at home? Are they doing, are they working outside of school, whatever the case might be? And we know that we've got a, we've got a large population of students out there that are, are very interested in this growing opportunity, you know, not only within our community but across the nation. We, we see higher ed in, in our community that are having opportunities for kids, like Amy said, with scholarships and that. So it's trying to find ways, it's balancing what we're currently doing and what we can realistically sustain. And then trying to find those things that, that kids are telling us that they're interested in doing.
Absolutely, I would concur with everything Joe said. You know, it's all about belonging as well too. And one of the things that we've, that we've seen in, in briefs or studies that have talked about esports is that sometimes those are, there are students that don't necessarily fit in with the, the, find the right extracurricular activities that they have now. And esports is something that is, sort of breaks down that barrier and changes that landscape. You could be an athlete, you could be someone in the drama club, you could be someone who's never- never gone out for any extracurricular activity and this is going to be something that would generate some interest. And there is a genuine interest among students out there for competitive video gaming, but it's not just about playing video games. I think that's something that we have to make abundantly clear is that there is a lot of crossover with academics as well, too. I mean, you talk about STEM and STEAM, there's a lot of things that you're looking at that you see with, with esports being added. The other piece as well, too, is that you, that as Joe said, that when we talk about looking at the competitiveness of esports, it's, they do the same thing. They review matches that they play, they look at how they can be good sportsmans, good sportsmanship can be conducted with that, they do data analytics, they look at a lot of different things that most, and a lot of different things, but also a lot of similar things that one of our traditional students would do right now participating in, participating in an extracurricular activity. So we believe that as we look through this process, how do we continue to offer a sense of belonging for our students that maybe hasn't participated in the extracurricular activities to this point? Another piece that we've seen out there and it's anecdotal right now as far as what I can share, but we've seen increased attendance when you offer an esport, that you see kids that are more engaged, they want to come to school, they want to participate in that. And they also, we see some academic success parallels with that as well, too. And the other piece is, is that you have, it doesn't matter if you're male, female or whomever, you all can compete on the same team.
I had two questions. Well, when do they compete or what time of day or is it after school, I assume extracurricular activity?
I would, I mean, obviously that'll be part of the exploration process, but I would anticipate that it would be similar to what we offer now, like after-school type practices and events and things like that. You know, I think of our robotics team, you know, maybe to closely align with that, they're doing different competitions on the weekends and those types of things, no different than some of our other extracurricular activities. So I would think it typically would be an after-school, outside-of-school-day type, type activity, but there could be some things that get incorporated during the school day as well. I mean, that'd be part of that process, that exploration process and figuring that out.
You envision like a conference, like an MBC?
I, I know we have.
Esports conference or?
We know that other schools are adding esports in our.
Really are.
Yep, I would, I would suspect and Colby and I were talking earlier today, I mean, you know, it, it might not be any different from girls wrestling. I mean, how long did, how long did that conversation go on and on and on before it was finally sanctioned, you know, at the Girls Athletic Union? So bowling and soccer would be kind of the same thing, those weren't always sanctioned sports. Amy was talking about the first soccer, you know, team that we had here in Dubuque was a combined team and stuff, so I, I would not doubt for a minute that at some point down the road, we would see that this could become a sanctioned activity within the state. But I think at the high school level, we would definitely have schools within our conference, but even locally, that over the next couple of years will probably be moving in the same direction if they haven't already, that we would have some competitions, shared competitions and stuff.
It's nice to see, it's nice to see that we have the, we're encouraging kids to get involved, be in school, not only the esports, I know the dance team, something going to be new as well.
Yeah.
And so we're doing things to benefit kids, very important.
Their interests too.
Their interest, absolutely.
I never even thought about this, but these are activities students are doing already.
Absolutely.
So if we can bring them in and then have some maybe boundaries, you know, that they know, I gotta show up at school, get good grades, you know, participate in a lot of different things, but then they're going to be excited to do the thing that they love to do.
As a community.
Yeah.
Not to get isolated.
Right.
That's the key.
Yeah.
And not just at their home in their basement.
Yeah. They can meet other people who have that same interest and.
Yep. Making those connections.
They're not going to be so withdrawn because they're going to be engaging with students that are in their school and their community. So, yeah, no, this is awesome, we have to meet them where they're at and that's where they're at.
And there is currently, back to your point, Jim, as Joe was saying, as we look at the state of Iowa, there is a national high school esports league already out there that's done nationally, so that competition, if we would get that mature in the process and we decided to move forward, that can either be competing against local schools in Iowa that are already doing that or competing against other districts nationally as well, too.
And even locally, if you, I mean, when you go home tonight, you know, or this week, Google Dubuque Esports League, there's conversations that I've had with, with people that are involved with that, getting that started over the last couple of years and how that could, you know, we could potentially do some partnering together and that, but that's just essentially a group of parents who wanted this for their kids and they're really getting their, you know, jumping off here this summer, doing some camps and things like that, but that's something locally that is happening. But that's kind of been two years in the process of, of getting that off and running.
And just one, one final thought on that, it is going to, it's going to take some resources and put something like this together. So therefore, it's going to be something that we're going to have to take a look at and as we said, explore how this is going to play out because we might have to look at partnerships, we might have to look at other entities that come to the table to help support us in this.
We have to have a coach or a supervisor of some variety, correct?
Equipment, yeah.
And the equipment, that's the, that's the tough thing, yeah.
I think it's important to remember, too, that whenever you add an activity, you have to ask yourself, what students are we pulling from? And, and if you add something that's similar, you're adding an activity that is really in its own thing and you're not pulling, you're not going to take kids away from other activities. They can do multiple things if they're already doing that. So I think that's really part of the appeal to it, too.
Now, I would be curious to see how we can tie this to creating a business as well because it seems like a lot of students and adults are utilizing this phone to build content and sell things. And so how do you leverage both of those with esports potentially?
Sure.
Great, starting point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Staying under the Student Achievement and Development, number seven talks about review and enhance behavior programming and supports to ensure a continued safe learning environment for students and staff while aligning with the new Iowa law. And so as we know, there's been some laws that have been passed and really the district is, is going to give the board an update on what those laws are and what that guidance is around it. We're really waiting for the state to give us those final pieces of guidance before we move forward with some of that. But really looking at our behavior programming, what supports do we give our students, what supports do we give our families and then what supports do we give our staff in, in some situations? So that's, that's an exciting time. And then number eight, Brenda, would you like to come up and talk about number eight around special education and post-secondary expectations?
Hi. Districts across Iowa this year received designations for special education. So we were alerted that we are a Level Two designation. What that means is that there were three different levels. We will begin to dive into our data in the fall with our AEA partners and we will be developing a state plan or a plan that we have to submit to the state regarding the data, which I have not seen yet, connected to likely transition. So my team has been working really hard on trying to enhance the support and professional learning that we give to our schools, but I think there's a lot more that we could do. So we're going to have a group that goes to Des Moines actually on June 15th to receive some initial training and then we'll start working with our AEA partners in August, so develop a plan.
Thanks, Brenda. Okay, next we're going to move to community engagement.
Can I have, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Can I ask a question under the student achievement?
Absolutely.
Because I, I just wrote it down, I know Tom Barton would, would say this and I think I asked this last year, I think all of these are great, what are we doing still for the high achievers?
Well, I think that when we talk about universal tier, we're not only giving interventions for deficiencies, but we're also giving interventions to try to help the top tier as well. So when you look at our GT programming or there's, there's lots of things that we're offering within that support time and those morning meetings and some of those other times that we have with our students to reach both ends and in the middle as well. So I think sometimes when we hear the word intervention, we think that that means that something bad has happened or, or there's, there needs some help and really it's for, it's really to meet each and every student where they're at. And that's why we really want to look at that universal tier so that we have a good menu of interventions that can meet the needs of each and every student where they're at.
And I, and I know this is happening too and something that, just for the residents to hear that with our top tiers, we're constantly looking at different programs and initiatives to continue to keep them at that level as being high achievers too, correct?
Absolutely. Yeah, I mean, when we're talking about, you know, some of these pathways and things, I mean, we're really, you know, we're pushing students into some AP courses or to, or to maybe some things that they would get them out of their comfort zone, to try new things as well, but I think that we're constantly doing that work as well.
That's good, because I think last year or maybe the year before, I think we were all fascinated by, or impressed is a better word, of the young student who took every single AP course. And it was like, wow, how do we get more students to, you know, if they choose to, to be involved or at least see themselves doing that so they can continue to be high achievers? And we want to provide that service where students have a variety of services to grow in their development.
Absolutely. Mark and Lisa, is there anything that I missed on that that you want to add?
I would just add just concurrent offerings as well, college-level courses.
Current, yeah.
Yeah.
And I would also add at elementary, we're really working on that differentiation piece, which also talks about how do we accelerate learning for all learners, gifted, struggling, right on target, whatever the case may be.
Okay, thank you. So moving to community engagement, really nine and 10 kind of go hand in hand, but in nine, we're really looking at how do we help engage our parents and families in the support that they need? And so one of the things that we've been hearing from BLTs or from our DSEL committee or from our principals is we need to offer nights that parents can come in and learn about blank, you know, they can learn about attendance, they can learn about cell phone usage, they can learn about, you know, I, I think about these ORB guns that we're talking about, you know, just how do we educate our parents on, and, and helping us in the education process with our student because we really need to do this together? And so how can we build those relationships and have those engaging sessions that parents will want to come to and how do we get them there, you know, and, and get the right people to come around the table to have conversations to help us educate their students? So that's, that's one of those, those pieces. And then number 10 is really how do we expand our, that throughout our community so that we can, can reach all members of our community, not just the ones that are maybe engaged through social media or, you know, they'll come to parent-teacher conferences or whatnot. How do we engage all communities? And I would say that Shirley and her team started an effort this year where we had an event at the Multicultural Family Center and she invited some, the marshalleys to come in and talk about attendance and pathways and we had 175 people, was it?
Registered, about 130 came.
Yeah, so what a great night. Had food there, fed, had dinner, we had interpreters, parents were able to ask lots of questions, students came, we had daycare for the little ones. And so how can we be more purposeful and do more of those things throughout the community? Because I think we found through that, through that event, is we need to meet people where they're at. People aren't always going to come to us on a specific night, so how do we go into, into their community and help share the, the things that we want to talk about when it comes to school-related things? So, so I think those are exciting initiatives for next year. Number 11 is to look at a central registration process. So it sounds simple, but right now, when somebody comes to register at one of our schools, they come into the building and we'll register one of their students if that student is going to Prescott, but then if their student is going to Washington or senior, we just don't have a good system in place. So Mike, do you want to talk a little bit about the central registration?
This is something we've talked about for a number of years and we've made a lot of good positive strides in the registration area, but as we talk through this process, one of the things we really want to do is create a streamlined system so that when a new family comes to the district or to register, that we can do that in one location at one stop, take, take care of everything. And we want to do that also acknowledging that that school and family connection is important, we don't want to remove that from the process. What we want to do is make sure that we can streamline the administrative, administrative piece of that for the families more than anything. Again, it's about, as many people have said tonight, meeting families where they are and to make sure that we can do that intake process in a more streamlined way and look at how that then incorporates across our buildings so that we can have a more welcoming face, that we can have the resources families might need to go through that process, there are complicated pieces of it when that comes to state and federal paperwork and all the things we're required to have, that can get complicated. And so to be able to have one resource to serve as the hub for that, and this is something that Amy talked about as we looked at those various feedback points, we heard this from families, we heard this from building secretaries, we heard this across the board, this was something that has risen to the top. And I think that's in part because we've made great strides in registration, that this is the logical next step for us and we've been working toward this process. So this year, we really plan to put some dedicated effort and resources into really making a process that's going to be the most streamlined for families.
Mike, I would be curious down the road, what we can learn from this process and how can the community leverage some of that information to support families? So if mom or dad can't help bring the student to school because, you know, they don't have a job or something, how can community partners fill that need down the road? Once we get this set up, there, if there's anything the community can learn from it to help partner with the district, that would be of value.
Absolutely.
And as you know, we're, the community bus has been going around to help with registration and, and job recruitment and we've been revamping the community bus to be pretty, something pretty exciting and special, so you want to talk about that?
Lots happening this summer thanks to our DRA grant funding, that's going to really, we have a shell of a bus in the back at the moment, right now, that's ready for walls and electricity and flooring and technology and all those things, that's really going to be a community showcase that allows us to be more intentional about our efforts to reach families and get out and again, back to the theme of meet families where they are, really looking at being able to expand our efforts in a, in a more robust way, in a more visible way.
Yeah. And then the last one under community engagement, that will be one that we continue on from last year was around school and business partnerships. And then effective resource management. So 13, we already talked about, was really to look at developing that new preschool center on Chauvinal Road and for that to open in the fall of 2024. Again, with offering preschool at all of our elementary schools, this would be in addition to, and to those offerings with some wraparound care. 14, I think this will be a big push for us, obviously early in the school year around the bond referendum, as we talked about with the new legislation, instead of going for a vote in September, we will now be going for that vote in November of 2023. So very exciting time with the gathering of the YES Committee and really getting out to our community and sharing the excitement about why we need to do this and what happens if we don't do this. I think that those are, those are two different conversations, but we're ready to share that with, with the YES Committee and have them get out and start sharing that with the community.
I'm, I'm super excited about that initiative specifically, just reading the papers with people, just thinking maybe we're not providing enough information and so as much as possible that we can get in the community and inform people of why we're doing this and what happens if, if it doesn't, just so we can continue to be transparent, I think is critical. And so I'm super excited about this and the volunteers who have agreed to say yes and help us to, to put this together. So thank you to you and those folks who are helping with this.
Yeah, it's exciting and if there's anybody listening that really or watching that wants to be part of the YES Committee, reach out to us, there'll be opportunities for that on our website as well, that, to, to gather some input. But I know we've got a lot of people that are in the PTO organization or actively in some of our buildings that have asked to be a part of those committees, so it's exciting time for the district.
I guess one positive, that Anderson brought that up, that we're reading different people, they're saying, just tell me more, they're not really saying no, they just want to know more.
They just want to know more, yeah.
We already have them going in the right direction, we just got to answer those few questions for them and, and we'll be able to do that.
Absolutely, we will, absolutely.
Take the bus with you.
It'll be a good selling point, right?
You're going to take the petition in the bus, I assume?
Well, if the bus was ready, we could do that, but the petition, we'll be taking that out here in the next few, next couple of weeks so we can bring that, those signatures to you at the, at the June board meeting, that's the plan. And then on number 15.
And then on number 15, develop the ability to add, state allowed virtual learning days due to inclement weather. And so the state has approved that we can do up to five days of virtual learning. And as we've been in our JABA like groups amongst other members of the state and the UEN, we're hearing that everybody is trying to find a way to do this, to do this work. And so we know right now that we can do this successfully in our six through 12 because we're one to one. And obviously we'll have to work on connections and, and making sure that we have hotspots and those types of things. But really we're going to gather a committee of teachers, administrators, community partners, parents to talk about what does this look like pre K5? Cause that's really where that work is gonna come into play. And the, the state is, is gonna be putting out guidance around what is required on those virtual learning days. So once we get those, that, that guidance to us, we'll really work over the summer to provide an opportunity to our, to our families and so that they would understand prior to any bad weather, what this looks like. But you know, the number one thing is to make sure that we have a quality day of learning for our kids. We don't want to just do it to say we've done it. So what can we do to make sure we have a quality day of learning on those five days that would be otherwise snow days? So, yeah.
What about, I know that SFR funds or COVID funds covered those hotspots initially when we were in hybrid or whatever we were. So they, those are still in existence, is that correct?
Not to the degree that we have before.
Oh, not as many, but we.
No. So basically to your point, Jim, as you said, we use those SFR funds through the federal government to help supplement the dollars for that, being that those funds are, has, are going to set to be sunset. We do not have the quantity of hotspots that we had going into COVID because of those funds, that funding was made available to us. So we would have to, we would have to explore what we're going to do around connectivity.
So in essence, this pre K through five is the issue probably for this virtual learning days. The problem is with the elementary year.
Yeah, just because we're not one to one in those areas. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And they would need to have access to devices.
They would need to have access to devices and so it may not, will, will that ever really come, will that come to pass for us for this year?
Well, that, that's why we're gonna put a group together and really see what that guidance looks like. Because it might be something that we send home, you know, with families, something that they could, cause not all of our students stay home on a snow day. Some go to a daycare center, they go to grandparents, you know, wherever they go. So how do we make that accessible for all?
And how do you work with all the different subject matters too?
Yeah, yep.
It'll be a work in progress.
Absolutely, absolutely.
How that comes to fruition.
Yeah, but I think as this passed across the state, you know, it's definitely something we have to look into and see if we can't find a solution to it. So.
Is that something too though, you know, with all these districts wanting to look into that, things could, information could be shared, you know?
Absolutely.
Not that we're the only ones that are gonna think outside the box. I'm sure other schools will be doing that as well, that.
Yep, I think Lisa and Mark have already started some of that.
Yeah, come together.
People having conversations about what that looks like.
From different districts to make that work.
Yeah, definitely don't have to reinvent the wheel, right?
Yeah, we don't want to have to, no. If someone else has a great idea, let's go with it.
Yeah, we share, we steal.
Borrow.
Borrow.
Borrow, borrow, thank you, yeah, we borrow.
Only because of TH is here, I don't want them to be.
Yeah, yeah, we borrow.
More district steals things.
And then the last piece is around employee excellence. And so three of our goals under employee excellence are to enhance the district's employee onboarding process with a particular emphasis on paraprofessional support. And so, I don't know, Brenda, do you want to talk about that piece at all?
If you remember back to the first couple of years that I was in this position, we did a lot of work around figuring out the fiscal responsibility of where should our district be with numbers of paraprofessionals? Through that work really came, we uncovered a lot. One of the things was that we really needed to get a diverse group of folks around the table to really dive into, how do we determine when paraprofessional support is needed for kids? How do we support that work? How do we fade that out? Because what we were seeing is once a student was deemed to need paraprofessional support, they needed it until they were done with school. So in addition to those things, what we know, and especially through COVID, is that they're hard, you know, it's hard to find quality candidates and keep them. We have averaged, Brian, probably 30 openings the last couple of years, all throughout the year. So they've been hard positions to fill. So the last two years, we had a group of people that did, completed a para study. We led them through that and they have done some really phenomenal work that I'm super excited about, which led us into one of the things needing to be, we need a better onboarding system. We need a way to find folks, we need to listen to them and what they need in order to do the work and support them in the work. So it is Brian's team, payroll and all of us that work closely with paraprofessionals that are going to team together to come up with a process to really support new paras and, and ongoing process to get paras the professional training that they need to do the job. They're the boots on the ground and a lot of times they're the ones that know kids best. And to be honest, nationwide, they probably receive the least amount of training and support. So we're gonna dive in and make sure that our paras feel valued and get what they need to do the work.
Perfect, thank you. We're gonna continue to strengthen and enhance employee recruitment and retention efforts while really working to maintain the district's position as the employer of, of choice. I think, you know, we've done a really good job of listening to our employees and what do they, what are their needs? What are their wants? We can't always meet their wants, but what are their needs? And so how do we continue to work together through that process? And I think Brian and his team have done a good job with that through negotiations. You know, they've brought some out of the box thinking to some negotiations, which we've been able to support them through that process. So I look forward to seeing, obviously us grow in this area because we know that recruitment and retention are huge for any employer right now. And then the last one is to explore enhancement of district-supported staff wellness initiatives. So they talked a little bit about this earlier, but how do we open up our facilities to give staff that, that they can go to the gym, they can go to the weight room, they can use our pool? You know, Joe has talked about starting leagues, you know, how do we have volleyball leagues and basketball leagues and some things that we can get people connected? Because as we know, as young people join our district, it's important for them to get in, connected to our schools as well. And so that they are part of that community, so they want to stay working for us as well. So those are some ideas that we've talked about. And so we'll be working to push some of those out as, in this upcoming school year. So with that, are there any questions about the plan for the 23, 24 school year? Or comments or?
I'm really excited about the new initiatives. They're awesome, thank you. All the hard work that everyone did. Ideas that I wouldn't even have thought of myself, they're really good.
And I think this process, not only does it, you know, work for our team that's out here, but we've also really engaged community. We've engaged our schools, our staff, our principals, so that everybody's a part of this work and students as well. So.
Well, there's been a lot of successes in the last year and I feel like this really sets us up for more in the future. So thanks to everyone for the work and putting all of this together and what you've done in the last year.
And I'd like to say that I appreciate having the, the staff come and present kind of on the ground what's going on to us. Makes it much better than just reading off the, stuff off the sheet.
They love coming tonight too. It's only they couldn't wait to be here, so.
You can see how close they are.
I know, I know. They look like they're sitting at their kitchen table back there.
No, I, I think, you know, this is real good. You know, I appreciate all the information and I also would love to see more efforts, specifically in my world also being in government, understanding how we could fill in some of these gaps where maybe you won't have to apply for a grant. And so the more that people in the community know how they can meet the district need strategically, I think that is beneficial for the entire community because we're, we're the hope that we need moving forward. No one's gonna come and save us, but we have to lock arms. And so I think that's very important moving forward and to continue to voice what we're doing so that way parents are not confused, like are you doing this or you're not? Or why are you doing X, Y, and Z? It's like, wait a minute, that may not be the, the facts. And so the more that we can do that, the best. And I believe Nancy has preached, I'm gonna use that word intentionally, this a few times. Mike, maybe moving forward, how do we inform our community members of all the exciting things that's going on? Especially I saw an email today from the governor advocating for something that probably is not, you know, aligning with us. So how do we do inform our residents that we are an amazing asset and we do have a buffet of exciting things going on? So if there's a way to market the district, there's an opportunity right there.
Absolutely. Amy, this is Nancy just.
Not, no, they are outside of the room. Amy, question about when the board might expect to see outcome data from this school year in terms of student achievement? I'm going back to Tammy's look, calling for us to continue to keep that out in front of us as, as we do.
So we.
When are you thinking we might be able to see that data?
So we could bring that to ed programs in the June meeting. I believe that we just got, I'm looking at Julie and, and our, all our ISAS data is in, correct?
All of our ISAS data is in for our district. There's not comparatives for the state.
Okay, but we do have information that we could definitely share at our ed programs meeting. So we'll plan to put that on the agenda, Nancy, for June, so we can share that out.
That'd be great.
Perfect, thanks Amy, I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
No, I think it's good. And just like I said before, I know that everything that we're doing supports student achievement, but we just need to verbalize it, to know that that is the intention and not just put it as a title and, and everything is under student achievement. What does that mean? You know, we need to, we need to be focused on that to know that we are working on reading and math and science and, you know, all of that stuff together, but be specific about it. And, and we need to be intentional on, on we're doing this because it does help with reading scores and, and being involved with this does help with understanding, you know, the, whether it's robotics or something, helps with math. Or the, you know, when we encourage extracurricular with music and, you know, all that kind of stuff. We need to be specific about that because we just assume, everybody thinks we're working on achievement. Well, they want to know. I, I mean, we, they want our kids that come out of our district to be successful, that they know that they have met the benchmarks that they need to make, if not beyond. We have, but we can't just assume everybody knows we're doing that. We need to be specific so we don't lose focus on it either. Not that we are, I'm not saying that we are, but you've got to be intentional on stating it. Because the more you state it, you know that that is really the end goal. It's not just keeping them in school, that's part of it, you know? You know, so the absenteeism all helps that. But it's because they can't understand the, the story to be able to understand what happened yesterday to be able to do the test that's tomorrow that gives them a better score. You know, we've got to just be very specific on some of that as well.
Yep.
But it's, this is really good and exciting stuff and it gets better each time, so.
Thanks.
Yeah, you're really thinking through all the different kinds of support that students would need to get to those places that Tammy's talking about, which is so important, especially coming after the last couple of years and what our students and staff and all of us have endured. So thank you for thinking very broadly and creatively and with your expertise on how to set our students up for success.
Yeah, we need to celebrate that because, you know, but when I, as I'm visiting schools, the principals all have their ISAS data on chart boards, right Megan? I'm looking at Megan, cause I'm walking in and I walk in and she goes, look at this data, it's so good, right?
Exactly, that's what we need to talk about.
And, and, and those things are visible in our buildings. And so how do we bring that out so the whole community sees it? So I appreciate you saying that. Yeah, cause I joke, I joked about Eric Johnson, but I went there and his, and one, one of his grade levels and he was, and it was still very good, good data, but he was just hung up on that. And it's just so his staff has those reminders as well. So we just need to get that out to the community. So thank you for that. Okay?
All right, thanks everyone. We're gonna take a five minute recess just to be able to kind of reset the room and let people go home. That's what you're doing next before we enter into closed session. So we are in a five minute recess.